And did you say meets as proposed along?
Yes.
Okay.
Although in favor of the motion as presented, you in favor Pete?
Yes.
Okay. It's unanimous then. Okay Gemma, thank you. And what will happen is that I'll write a notice of decision. It won't have much in it. It will probably state that you have come to an agreement with your abutters and that the plan has to be followed as presented, which is sort of standard language on a notice of decision, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. You've been very patient, we appreciate it.
Thank you everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The next is a public hearing for an affordable building and supply and nursery at 133 Osiphe Trail with Todd Goslin and Nathan Johnson. Who's going to speak for you two gentlemen tonight? Todd? So if you just give us an overview of what it is you're going to do and then, once again, it will be exactly what just happened, I'll open it up. Anybody has any questions they can ask you, is that okay?
Yes, good evening.
Was your microphone up there?
Yes.
Yes. There's been no changes to anything from the site plan. I mean from the site walk last Monday, we are planning on building a nursery on part of the property and then affordable building supplies, discount building solution business and the main warehouse building. We are working with architect, the EPA. There's multiple people involved now that we feel are necessary to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted correctly. And the planning board was able to meet some of those people last Monday. And everything will be stamped to all the codes in Maine, as well as the DEP and the EPA will be satisfied and the boundaries. But yeah, we're excited to do that and forward to doing it in the right timing, so.
Anyone from the public have questions? Bonnie?
Thank you, Bonnie Thorndorff Loughlin. I used to think it didn't have to be said, but I want to be sure the applicants know that any questions I have are meant in a very friendly way and for the purpose of curiosity and hearing in a public setting from you what the plans are. I feel that we're lucky tonight to have the public invited. We've heard bits and pieces of this. And it seems like the microphones are working tonight?
Yes.
And the video is working too, so this is the opportunity.
We have it under control.
And specifically, I have picked up over some of these meetings that weren't perhaps as fortified with media opportunities, that as you say in your application, Mr. Goslin, there is, the site is currently in violation and requires remediation to restore 3.2 acres of wetlands. So that's something well known to the planning board, I guess, and to any of us who had the invitation to come look at the application, we could see that. And you've also said that the restoration is to begin this year. There will be several phases of restoration work over a period of three years with monitoring to occur for seven years or until the EPA signs off. And I saw also in the packet, there was communication with the regional EPA people, person, and also with the Army Corps of Engineers and also with someone from the Maine DEP. So I, it seems like everyone is aware that remediation has to happen. This involves wetlands and there is a plan and it involves monitoring. I'm just unsure about is the monitoring going to be done by the EPA or done by the DEP and in what intervals that is? And could you please also just tell us exactly what the violations are there? I assume they were done before you came on board.
Yes, that's true.
But this would really help us all who care about the natural resources of our precious town know what those violations were. Is that fair to ask?
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
The primary concern for the EPA was the wetlands area was disturbed with additional sand, silt, and other debris being moved onto that area, being filled with the clearing and leveling of the land. There were roughly 3.2 acres, I shouldn't say that. Before we got involved, it was, it was agreed upon between the previous, the people that sold us the property and the EPA that 3.2 acres is what was going to be necessary to get rid of the violation. I don't know exactly how many acres was affected in total, but 3.2 acres is what the EPA is requiring us or the previous owners to remediate in order to lift the violation. So I don't know if it was exactly 3.2 acres was the number before, but it is, that was the number that we inherited and that's the number that has stayed firm with the EPA and they've discussed that with us. That is not a non, that's a non-negotiable number. So that is, that is what we are planning on restoring. It is a three-phase process this year. Because we're already late in the year, we are starting in a very small stretch, which would be closest to the road, closest to the new driveway. That is the area that we plan on restoring with additional plants being planted, with potentially additional sand being removed from the area. And there's a culvert that goes through the, underneath the highway that will be cleared. Right now it's half full of sand. So that would be what we are working on this year. There is a third-party company that is involved in the monitoring of the work. So the EPA-
Was this company hired by the EPA?
We have to hire the company and they had, the EPA had to agree with them.
Okay.
The name of the company is Flycatcher and they are the ones that are doing the EPA-approved cons-
Right, okay. I remember them now, thank you.
So, yes. Until everything is completely finished with the DEP, the EPA, Flycatcher, nothing is happening. So it is why you don't see any work on the land. We want to make sure everybody is completely on board with the plan. So we would have thought that we would have already kind of started a little bit of work, but until everybody is completely satisfied, we have agreed to do nothing. So we would actually like to get going because plants need to get put in the ground in order for them to root before the winter, but it, going slow is probably the best process for us, so.
Thank you. Bonnie, do you have other questions?
Going forward, can you talk a little bit more about how the monitoring process that apparently the EPA and the DEP will be doing, how it will go on for seven years?
So the, the Flycatcher firm, which is an environmental restoration firm, they are going to be doing the monitoring and they are going to be sending the reports to EPA and the DEP. The EPA is not going to be monitoring themselves. There is a standard that the EPA puts off that we need to meet. And the Flycatcher company is what's basically verifying that we are meeting that standard. If it doesn't meet that standard, the monitoring, they won't lift the violation. So we want to meet that standard because we would like to have that violation lifted from the property.
Yes, Bonnie.
Hearing that, is that something that the planning board is going to consider to build into your-
Yes, to the notice of decision?
Yeah.
Yes.
The interval, the monitoring, the intervals required for the monitoring and hearing-
Right.
At those intervals from this company?
Right.
At the same time, I'm trying to remember from past notices of decision, will you all have the ability to be, enforce that in any way or if not, will our CEO be doing it?
Well, I think one of, one of the conditions that I envision being part of the notice is that these reports will be given also to Craig and that way the town will be, you know, aware of what's going on and Craig will be the one that will ensure that that's happening. That's what, that's, he's the code enforcement officer, so.
I hear you. Perhaps you remember some of the times we haven't quite known who would enforce.
Well, that's with a previous code enforcement officer, then that was very unfortunate.
Is this, does this sound good to you too Craig that-
Sure, you just have to send me the reports when you get to hold them.
And you'll know to keep looking at them until everybody's signed off?
Thank you. Okay. Are there, that's all-
Will they be giving you reports? When that's done, you'll be getting your reports, you can give me a call.
Okay.
What was said about your stormwater runoff? Did you get that, talk to the DEP about that?
Yes, we actually have, we showed the, some of the planning board was there to be with the stormwater management engineer. He has finalized his plan and that will be submitted to the DEP for their approval, but we do have an official stormwater management plan.
Great. Any other questions?
Do you have it with you?
We have a conceptual design, but not the huge report, but it will be going, that will go to the DEP for their approval.
Can we just take a quick peek away now?
Yeah.
And what's the plan called again, the stormwater?
Management plan.
Management plan.
What is the story on the engineer? You were going to have an engineer on the-
We also have a building engineer.
Okay.
Yep.
The man law of progress.
Yes, there's a guy.
Good.
Now, when we were there, the stormwater engineer was there, that's why the building architect was also present.
So could, could, once again, could you guys that were there give us an overview of what, of what was said?
At the site walk, in addition to these two gentlemen, we had the stormwater guy that's doing the stormwater management plan, the guy that's doing this. And he answered a number of questions for us as to, you know, which way the water goes, where, you know, the new driveway versus the old driveway and where the wetlands were and that sort of thing. He, he hadn't at that particular time finalized his plan, but he was well into it. So he was helpful. The other person there was the building architect and she was helpful in explaining exactly how the building would be built and, you know, the size and the place and it was well-sticked out. It was easy to see where this thing was going, so, you know, they did a good job of getting ready for that site walk, in my opinion.
Now that I have a pen, can you tell me what the names of those two people were? The stormwater management guy, do you know what his name?
John Riordan.
Okay.
J.O.H.N.R.
John.
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 J.O.H.N.? Okay.
And the lady, our architect, her name is Candace Gilpatrick.
Gilpatrick?
Yes, but there's no K at the end, it ends with a C.
Okay.
Starts with a C, ends with a C.
And she's the architect.
Okay.
As I recall Darrell, you had a question, something about the posts that were on the corners of the building, did you, to hold up the roof? Did you have, was your question answered?
You had, you had the engine, you ever done in that anyway, now you said go ahead.
There's an official engineer that's-
Okay, so you're happy, you're happy, okay, all right, okay, just wanted to make sure. Bonnie, yes?
Another thing about the project, I think, just so the public can hear, is that there are two or three buildings going up that are going to be big in terms of square feet. I've been told they'll be bigger than the Trico building. So I think that's just another part of this that visually might be good to hear before we're, you know, before we're surprised by that. And I, I've seen the square feet of them, I've seen you show the stakes where that went, Mr. Goslin. One thing that I didn't take into account, how, when you show the square feet of a building, if it's all one floor, do you show the height of the building also and whether you did or didn't?
That would be volume, that would be volume.
Well, whether you did or didn't, what will we see as we're driving along? What will we see when we look, when we come to your place to buy nursery stock and building stuff?
How tall will the building be, in other words?
It's a 412 pitch with a 20-foot sidewall, so the middle of the, well, hate to put myself on the spot with the math here.
The sidewall would be 20 feet and everything else would be something less than that.
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
So 20 feet will be the max height?
It'll rate at four inches per foot.
And of course, the nursery is greenhouses with pretty flowers and that's hopefully what you're catching your eye and not a steel building.
I'm not sure those greenhouses would be actually visible from the road, will they kind of?
They should be directly visible straight away from the driveway, that is our hope, is that's where your eyes will go.
Yeah, you can see on this plan they are, they're not behind the building, they're to the right. Okay, any more questions?
Yes.
Hold on just a minute Pete.
Before you, before you go any further, when are we going to see plans of this, what it's going to look like on paper?
In other words, what he's asking is what is a building going to look like? Usually at some point in time, we see a, you know, not just a drawing like this, but the actual architect's drawing of what the building will-
Architect does have a drawing.
Do you have it with you?
The architect has done the sidewalls drawings, but I don't, I don't have that with me, but I could, I'd be happy to share. It's, it's going to be a fairly plain rectangular look of the warehouse. I wish there was a way to pretty it up, but-
You don't have an elevation plan?
Sure.
My name's Nathan Johnson. Without having a whole drawing of the entire building and what plans there are to make the building appealing and all that, a lot of that will be covered with landscaping. That's my job, that's my full-time job right now, I'm a professional landscaper. So we look forward to making sure, Bonnie and everybody, sorry, but we look forward to making this place beautiful. It's going to take some time, it's going to have, require a little bit of trust in the process of going through it, but getting, getting the business off the ground is, is laborious and we plan on doing a lot of that work ourselves, but I assure you that the plan would not be to leave a building that looks unappealing on Route 25, a main highway that is filled with beautiful nursery plants and owned by somebody that sells nursery plants and a landscaper. I know that's not on paper, but it may be something that is good to hear for the public to hear that it's, this property will be under care. We built great relationships with great people, especially after our last meeting Darrell and we have a great team and some of you that did the site walk got to meet these people and have a little assurance on what that is, so.
Well, part of the notice of decision would be, you know, perhaps not naming the exact plants, but there would be appropriate landscaping to fit the building.
Yeah.
We don't usually get into naming plants because we're not, none of us are landscape architects.
I would imagine when you look at this from the road, that you'll probably see some, maybe, the front of the, the front of the building that is perpendicular with the road is going to have a stretch, is going to have wetlands right in front of it and we have to plant things and we want it to look nice. And we have a selection of, a list of plants that we can choose to restore that and then, so you'll, you'll see a big wall of a warehouse and it should look appropriate with maybe some banners representing some of the things that we sell or some type of marketing, but also with shrubbery and the right blend of shrubbery and trees to bring softness to the building.
Is there going to be any windows in that building?
There will be, there'll be windows in the office, which is the-
Not the warehouses though?
No, because we really need the wall space. It's very important that this, this type of business has a lot of wall space to store the materials that we're going to sell.
I would ask that when you do get a building rendering, if you could drop that by for us to see, just, you know, just so that we-
Are you going to have an elevation plan with this?
Yes.
Yes, that's being done, remind me the name of-
That's Wayne T. Woods Survey Company.
Wayne T. Woods.
Actually, it was on the property this week and we'll have that, the building architect needed it for, to finish her plans.
Wayne T. Woods?
Wayne T. Woods Survey Company.
Oh, yeah.
And we feel very confident with the stormwater management plan along with the elevation plan that we'll, we'll be able to achieve great water runoff into, into areas and we're again, nursery and landscaping, so we're going to use a lot of the water that get from rain, excuse me, and collect a lot of that water to be able to use. So it's not just, maybe Bonnie, it'd be helpful if this does to say, I'm a certified organic landscaper, it's not, I'm just a landscaper. I, I work in an area in Scarborough and we're surrounded by wetlands all the time, everywhere I work. And I'm required to do this, but I also not just think of it as a requirement, but I agree with what the DEP and the EPA say are mandatory for certain areas and we also are aware of the footprint that we're bringing to the table and removal of wetlands and trading them. It's all within my scope of professional work that I do on a daily basis. So there's confidence in that and, and I am DEP and DEP certified as well as certified organic. So I know, I know just that it helps, maybe just ease.
I don't think anyone else expects you to lay out a landscaping plan now, so don't even, I don't, I think it's-
Well, that's why I bring it to the concern, maybe of the people in the public that might have the environmental concerns, it does lift a little bit of a burden knowing that.
Go ahead Bob.
I don't have any question that the people most qualified to restore that property are you guys. I, I have no, no worries about that. I am a little bit concerned that we don't have a building plan though. I'd like to see what that building looks like, the elevation plan.
And the parking.
The parking is, you know, is drawn out here, but-
The numbers.
It's very difficult to, you know, put a final stamp of approval and we, we can't see what it is. We got a one-dimensional drawing, I got a pretty good idea, but I think the elevation plan and the, you know, the front view, side view elevation is important, I think we have to have that. Now whether we have to have that to vote tonight, that's something I'm not sure.
We could put that in our conditions.
Yeah, we could do, yeah.
That's what I would suggest, Bonnie, is putting that as a condition.
Wait just a minute, yep, yep, what, you had a comment, okay.
Are we proceeding in the wrong way? Should we have the plans before they do anything in the ground?
That's what we're asking right now, yeah.
Because we don't, we can't differentiate, differentiate where the lines are and how close they are to them when they're laying out.
What lines?
The building, if you're following the setbacks and everything. I mean, without that drawing-
Well, that's state out, without, you don't, you don't need a drawing for that. We know where the wetlands are, we know where the setbacks are, we already know that and they've already got that out. What we don't have is what does the building look like and what is the elevation plan? That's what we don't have.
Right, but as a business, we should have that before we start.
Well, those two, those two things are, are coming, so if it is a possibility to make them a condition, then we'd be open to that, but they are coming, they're happening as we speak, so we're simply waiting on the two people, Mark and, no, not Mark, Wayne and-
Candace?
Candace, thank you.
Darrell, did you have a, I'm sorry, did you have a question again?
Well, they're going to, you're going to have all that stuff you said anyway, the elevation and all that, the prints. These buildings are going to look pretty big from the road, but you do planning, so I mean, like eight-foot trees and stuff here and there would make that building look smaller.
Absolutely, and as do we want them, because we want the first thing to be that is eye-catching is be the nursery.
Trico's building was a big building, but they put windows along in the front of it to take that height out of it and they put a, was it a brick I think if I remember right?
So you could put, use trees instead of windows, is that what you're saying?
Excuse me?
You could use trees instead of windows to break up the?
Yeah, you can make the building look smaller with trees.
Personally, I have confidence that with the expertise you both have.
I'm not telling you gotta do that. I'm just, I'm not telling you have to do that.
Well, that's, that's their approach and I hear you there clearly and maybe people don't agree, but some of the banners that go up there are, would be somewhat of a way to break the wall up, so it's not just a metal wall, because I.
But it will look like, it will look like it says right here, a warehouse, so.
Yeah, it'll take the shape of a warehouse. There's no, there's nothing we can do about that and and just, I, I understand that's a concern, but more importantly, we look forward to how we can, this business is gonna serve the community and it's gonna, it's gonna be, it, it might not have the Taj Mahal appeal, but it will, we plan on making this a very enjoyable place to come for customers and towns and know a lot of people in this town. I've gotten to meet a lot of people in this town and and we look forward to it. It's, our customer service is gonna be of great importance, so there's nothing we can really do to change the way the warehouse looks, because that's the kind of requirements we need in that type of a building to be able to store the things that we're gonna provide for the public, so I hope that answers that directly.
Pete, did you have more question?
Still, we'd rather see a complete set of plans before we proceed.
Okay, all right, all right. Are you, would you be comfortable if, if that's part of the condition, that they have to submit the plan before they can start any construction?
Yes.
Because we either need to vote on this or we need to get an extension. We have a time limit in the ordinance as to.
I can work with that.
Can you? Okay. Any other questions? Craig, you cool?
This ain't a shed roof type building, right? It's a pitched roof? So it's gonna be, the sidewalls are twenty feet plus the four-on-twelve. How wide's the building?
Seventy feet.
Seventy feet?
Seventy-six.
So that's probably another fifteen feet on top of that. So it's gonna be thirty-five feet tall roughly to the peak.
Okay.
So it's a four-twelve foot?
Yes.
So it's thirty-five times, we have that.
So.
Yeah, all of that.
Bonnie, yes, you had another question?
Thank you. So is it our understanding from hearing, being here in the audience and pretty much hearing all of you put this together that there will be some conditions if you do approve it that will go toward, that will go toward aspects about the building that we will eventually, we would, including the public, we'd be able to see an elevation plan beforehand?
When they, things are always available in Craig's office or in the planning board office.
And also, could Mr. Goslin repeat, because he said.
Wait a minute, repeat what?
Repeat, that he wouldn't start anyway before something happened and I wanna be sure I'm hearing, is it flycatchers go ahead that you said? You said you won't even start until that happens. Thank you. Thank you for repeating it or clarifying.
Mark Stebbins is the director of the DEP here in Maine and he's advised us that we do not touch the ground until the flycatcher report has been approved by the EPA and the DEP. Therefore, the boundaries are perfectly understood where we're working with, as well as exactly what the restoration plan is. They also approve the restoration plan and give us the go-ahead to begin work. So with that advice, we feel it is necessary to take that advice or else we're no better than the, the previous, so we're hoping to, to take the advice that we're given and that was, that is our plan, is to wait till the DEP says, "Go ahead and start groundwork."
Okay, any other questions? Yes, Judy.
I have a question, I have a question. Oh, Judy Weymouth, The Long Way, Leamington. I have a question that, I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, but when that property was raped several years ago, I don't know how else to describe it, why was, why was nothing done? It seems to me nothing was done and now it falls on the purchasers of the property to remediate somebody else's bad behavior.
Unfortunately, that's the way it works, unfortunately for them.
It's, it's a shame.
It is.
Okay, that being said, I'm a frequent flyer at the farm in Hiram where the nursery is now and I can tell you, I am so excited that they're going to move that business down here. I don't smoke, I don't drink, I don't, but I buy plants and boy, I like their plants.
I was gonna say, I'm sorry for you, but I won't.
Yeah. I, I just, I think this is a really great thing for the town and it's a great thing for people like me that can't stop buying plants. There's, there's such nice people to deal with and I know, I know they're gonna do it right, because I've been to their home, basically their home, and I can see what they've done with, from scratch. I think this is a great thing and I really hope that it'll be approved. I, I, I think that this, I understand what you're asking for with the elevation plans, but I wish that you would ask for it before tonight. It seems like that should have been something that you asked for the last, at the last meeting.
I believe we did.
But, but I, I would like to see you approve this plan, so they can get on with their concrete work and so forth with the condition that they provide the, the elevation architectural plans and stuff. I just really think this would be a great thing for the town, rather than a Roma Joe's or a Dunkin' or some other stupid thing. I, I just.
Tell us how you feel.
Thank you.
Some people would prefer the Dunkin' Donuts.
We'll have some, we'll have, we may have a little coffee stand for you, because I like coffee, so you can, you can come down for a cup of coffee. That would be something that is fun for the nursery area, but I feel as though the need to say that the thing, everything in motion right now feels to be moving at the proper speed. It's, it's not too fast and it's not too slow. The plans are coming for the elevation. I'm sorry those aren't here tonight. I understand that brings a hiccup for the vote. But they're, it, it feels proper speed. They're, they're, the balls are in motion, so I did, just kinda wanted to speak to that, so relieve that concern. There's, there won't be any thing that's missing from the, that you won't be able to access in the near future here, but the general scope of the plan is, is provided and that, that, it is very difficult to meet all the requirements at the speed for tonight, but we have been moving fast, as fast as possible and we can't make anybody else move on our behalf any faster, so.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
We have thirty days from tonight to make our final decision. Do you think you could have those elevation plans and building within, let's say today is the
Fifteenth.
fifteenth and we meet the first and third Mondays of the month, do you think by the third Monday of October, you might have those plans available?
I do believe so. That, that is, that will be within the next thirty days and we're also hoping that the flycatcher plan, that had a thirty-day period as well.
So perhaps to allay concerns, we could, if the board agrees, hold off on our final approval and then my personal opinion is that this, this will be approved. I mean, that's my personal opinion and I, I believe probably the rest of the board agrees, but if it doesn't matter to you whether we vote to not, tonight or, or the mid of October, because you can still go forward with what you're doing, because you can't start any construction, as you said, until
That's correct.
EPA and the DEP approve. So you, whatever you're doing now, you can still move forward and to satisfy the concerns of some board members, we could do the final vote on the fifteenth if you, are you comfortable with that?
We wanna work with whatever you feel comfortable with. Obviously, our preference would have been positive today.
But what, what, what difference would it make to you in what you're doing, whether we voted tonight or a month from tonight?
Probably no difference in terms of our actual activity, just in case we actually did get all of that in order quicker than a month from now.
If you have it by the first Monday of, of October, which would be the sixth, bring it in then, just let Craig know.
I think we would definitely have a lot of that stuff at that time.
Okay.
Yeah, that would make sense.
I only said the fifteenth because you have the thirty days and I didn't know whether you needed all that time. So let's say that, let's say that we'll put you on the agenda at seven fifteen for for you, for you to come in and show us the plans on the sixth and if by any chance you don't have them at that point, let Craig know and we'll just move it up to the fifteenth. Does that work for you?
It's actually the twentieth.
It'll be the twentieth.
Twentieth, I'm sorry, the twentieth, yeah, twentieth. Does that work for you?
That would work for us.
Okay, so you're on for the agenda on October sixth at seven fifteen.
At six?
Yep, that's the first Monday in October. Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Everybody?
Seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen on the sixth. Okay? Yes, Bonnie, you have one more?
I hear your plan for the sixth and the twentieth and/or the twentieth of October. Do you plan that this will be the last opportunity for public comment?
This is the last opportunity, but given that the plans are not here tonight, if any, we'll obviously display them and if it raises a, you know, concern, I don't mind a question or two.
But it won't be a technical public hearing?
It won't be a public hearing. We're having the public hearing now, yeah.
Okay, great. So two other quick things, if I may. Could you, with wetlands so close, could you just speak about pesti, the use of pesticides that you do or don't do with your property, with your plantings?
Pesticides were never in the.
Would you get up, Nathan, and speak? Sorry about that. We have, we have an audience out there in Neverland, so.
Pesticides are never in the plan. There's no use of pesticide to restore a wetland, so there won't be any spray or any type of input that is unnecessary to the environment. You do so by planting the correct plants.
Yes, wait a minute, well, I saw Tammy's hand back there, Bonnie.
Tammy Dergan Pike, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about this. I'm here to support Nate and Todd and I think this will be a great thing for Leamington. I think it'll be a gathering place for Leamington too and my husband and I would be frequenting it.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
And yes, now Bonnie.
Again, I feel I need to say again what I said in the beginning, that the opportunity to speak at a public hearing, I feel is a chance to sometimes assure the public, certainly to educate the public and to have the pleasure of presenting a a good plan, a well-thought-out plan, and I wanna restate that, because that is where I feel the applicants always have the opportunity. So what I was trying to get at, Mr. Johnson, a moment ago about pesticides, didn't have to do with how you would remediate the wetlands, I hope, but going forward, how in your nursery business you use or don't use pesticides, so that when we come to the property, we know the wetlands are right there, what's going on with how you take care of your beautiful plants, whether there is a use of pesticides that might migrate to the wetlands.
I think they just made it clear that they're not going to use pesticides, so I don't think we need to.
One other question, Joyce.
Yes, Darrell?
My understanding was the previous owners were fined for those wetlands disturbance. Do you know anything about that?
They wasn't fined.
They were fined at the time, yeah, I thought they were, yeah.
Okay. And, yes ma'am? I, I said that there, I was just, it was getting to be a bit redundant and that I thought they made it very clear that at no time, either in the initial plant, planting or in their future planting, they will use any pesticides. That will be part of the notice of decision, one of the conditions. Hi.
Hi, Sharon LaPlant. I bought the property. Um, who was fined?
Excuse me just a minute, Sharon. She, she doesn't have her hearing aids in. Sharon LaPlant. And did you state your address, Sharon?
One-three-seven Ossepe Trail. I'm right next to the left of it.
Yep, gotcha.
Who was fined? The mark that bought the land or the original owners of the land?
I don't know, but I, I heard they were fined and they verified they were fined.
Do you know which?
Mark Four.
Mark Four.
Oh, he was the realtor, right?
Yes. We're not gonna get into gossip, but yes, okay, sure.
Hi Sharon.
Hi, how are you?
Sharon and I had a wonderful conversation in person, which was nice in the day.
I got nosy and wanted to know what was going on.
And as you should, and then you're fine and you're welcome to come right up and talk to us, me, anytime. Just to, so we're not speaking ill of anybody of the previous land. There were some errors that were made and whether those errors were felt intentional. We believe they were blatant in such a way that they were, they were thinking that there was more wrong and, and I will speak to that, that part of this process. I have learned a lot of working with the DEP and the EPA, that it would be very difficult to know that information unless you were actually speaking with the DEP and the EPA personally. So, yes, there was a violation and yes, it's being remediated, is that the word? And, but.
That's part of your business plan, so you don't have to necessarily expound on it.
Okay, but I just wanna be clear so that there's not, not false, false pretenses are going against their name.
Right.
Whose name?
Mark Four.
Well, he's the one who did it.
Yes, I understand. And I know this.
Okay, that, that's enough. We don't need to discuss that name anymore. Yes.
Okay, I was negligent and I didn't come up and look at the plan before time.
We can give you a copy of what we have here.
Oh, awesome.
And you can look at it, but you can also come back on the sixth if you want.
Oh, I will. Where on that tract of land is the building and nursery going to be?
Why don't you give her one of those?
Because that's probably the.
She can have this.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, okay, awesome. Okay.
There's the greenhouses.
Okay.
There's the building. This is your property over here.
Okay, and.
With a buffer. No trees coming down on your side.
Okay. So there's gonna be a lot of buildings there?
One, one.
One big building and some greenhouses.
Okay.
And a lean-to. On, that, that is on your side of the land.
That will be just a lean-to, not a full building?
Lean-to, just a lean-to. An open cross.
Okay.
This here.
Yep. Okay.
Are you in the Johnson place, what used to be the Johnson place?
I believe, yes. Well, no, it's, we've been there forty years, so.
So as you're looking off twenty-five at the building, which side are you on?
The left.
The left, okay.
The little one on the hill?
That, that answers his question.
I was thinking about Lucille Johnson's place, is that?
Yes.
You've been there forty years?
I paid on it long enough.
Do you have any more questions, ma'am?
No, I think that will take care of it. No, I think that will take care of it.
Okay, well, you're welcome to come back once again.
Okay.
You can even call Craig and find out if they're going to be here on the sixth or the twentieth, just so you don't...
Okay. Now, had there been meetings before this one?
Yes, there are. The way the process works is the applicant brings in an application, and then we advertise it like you've got a notice because you're in a butter, and then we have this public hearing. And sometimes they come in even before they present their application, just to go over the idea of what they want to do and give sort of a sketch plan, if you will.
Okay. Now, were the butters notified of the...
The only time...
Okay, just this one?
It's only, yeah.
Okay.
The planning board meets the first and third Mondays of the month, and, excuse me, anyone is welcome to come, but we're not an open meeting forum. Sometimes we get a little nice, but most of the time, we look for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. She did.
I do need to make a clarification on the pesticide question. I think there was a statement that would not be truly correct, and I want to make sure it's on record. The remediating the wetlands area, that would include no insecticides, no pesticides. The way I operate Rise and Shine Nursery, we use beneficial insects to take care of the insecticide need. However, there are times where there is a thrip outbreak, there is something that we cannot control to the best of our abilities, and we want, we do use, at the very minimum, the least possible insecticide and fungicide use in order to keep healthy plants. And that would be something that we would want to have the ability to continue to do in a nursery setting. We would promise the customer that anything edible, vegetable starts, fruit trees, fruit bushes, that would never see an insecticide or fungicide. However, we have a hundred thousand plants in the greenhouses, and if there is an outbreak that we cannot control organically, we want to make sure that we reserve the right to do whatever it takes to make sure these plants don't die. So, I just want to make sure that that would never be used in the wetlands area, but that at the very worst-case scenario, that we want to make sure we have that ability to take care of the plants that God entrustes to.
You can legally do that anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can't stop them from doing that.
Thank you. Any more questions? Yes, Bonnie?
Thank you so much for that clarification, Mr. Goslin. At the same time, are there zoning standards that do have to do with the proximity of a wetland and any runoff from certain types of pesticides in use? I feel this is a reasonable question.
I'm trying to think. I don't know. I think usually those things are handled in a notice of decision. I don't know that there's, that's not a zoning problem, per se. It is more a condition that could or could not occur. And if the board felt that it was a possibility in a wetland situation, that would be one of the conditions that no pesticides be used.
I would urge our planning board to really drill down...
Well, you know...
To see what the right thing to do is.
I think that everybody thinks you can cover every single minor or major issue in an ordinance, and you just cannot do it. Everybody has a different interpretation. The laws change, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that, this is my personal opinion, the other board members can disagree, that people need to understand, they have to have faith in us and trust us to listen to what you're saying here, and to, when the notice of decision is written, that those considerations are taken into account.
That's all I really said, Joyce.
Well, that's exactly what we're going to do. I mean, that's, we do that every time we write a notice of decision.
Thank you for assuring us. The public is here, we're spending our time, too. Part of what we're doing is to be sure it's on record. And it would be, and it's lovely of them, too, because they want to do that also.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So, I have one more...
But aren't you saying they're not responsible enough to follow directions and do it the way they're supposed to do it? Is that what you're saying?
They will. And Craig is our enforcer, so he makes sure that they're done, too.
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry. Am I supposed to...
Grace has a question.
I think both of them have been very upfront with us and really given us great assurance that they will, to the best of their ability, restore things. But I think we have to allow them that professional ability to run the greenhouse as is needed. I think, you know, making sure that it stays away from the wetlands. But I think the fact they've both been so honest with us in terms of how they're planning to do it, we have to have a little trust in them going forward, that they're going to do it to the best for our environment. I mean, they don't want to be using pesticides on their plants. Occasionally, things happen that it's a necessity, and they were very upfront about that. And I think, you know, to say that no pesticides can be used in the wetlands is fine, but I think with the greenhouse, we have to have that respect, that they're going to do it to the best of their ability. And that's my opinion also, it's just...
Once again...
We can't stop them from using the pesticides anyway.
Yes, Bonnie?
The city of Portland, and I think some other municipalities also, to my knowledge, have done away with pesticides. For instance, at Evergreen Cemetery and other places. But all I'm doing is making the requests that you all will pay attention to the possibility of pesticides leaching into the wetlands. And I bet Mr. Goslin and Mr. Johnson also are sensitive to that for their own reasons, because they're good people, but also because the flycatcher or the DEP and EPA will continue to be monitoring the wetlands. Is that right?
Okay.
One last question, from me, anyway.
Okay, what is it?
When you're going home at night, Mr. Goslin, will you be on our very busy Route Twenty-Five here in town? Will you be driving your buggy home to Hiram? And if so, will you promise us you'll be very safe? Both you and the horse. Will you be driving home on Twenty-Five? Say what? Not in dark, of course, but otherwise.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other questions? If not, the public hearing is closed. And if the board agrees to what I said earlier, that we will not vote on the final decision until the next time we meet, or when they have their plan together. Has the board agreed to that?
Yes.
Darrell, you comfortable? Okay. All righty, so we're not going to take any vote tonight. We'll, once you bring the plan in, I promise you, we will vote that night.
Thanks.
Okay? Thank you very much for coming in. Thank you for your patience. If we're going, I think Mr. Taylor is up next.
That's accurate.
I have to ask, ladies and gentlemen, if you're going to have a conversation, please go out in the foyer out there or go outside, because we have to continue on with the meeting. David, are you ready?
I am.
Good night. Now, let me ask you a question first. Maybe I should have asked Craig. I'll ask Craig. This is not a subdivision plan, correct? This is just an application for him to cut off a lot?
This is, what he did was he bought this, rebought this land, and he split off one lot, and he's adding, he's splitting up three more lots and adding the remainder to his existing property.
Right, but what I'm asking you is what are we dealing with tonight? This is not, he's not going to develop a subdivision there himself, is he?
No, he's just splitting the land into lots.
Right, so whoever's going to make it a subdivision has to come back to subdivision.
So, you plan on selling these off every five years, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just selling, they'll all be for sale. That's all I'm trying to do, is to be able to market the three lots.
So, how will that not be a subdivision?
Well, but, I guess I'm a little bit confused here. If he's not going to be the developer, tonight's not an application for a subdivision?
He's still splitting, he's a property into more...
If this is an application for a subdivision, this ain't going to do it.
No, this really should be on your original subdivision. The one where you did the subdivision when you did the solar farm?
That was done by someone else. I had nothing to do with that.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, that was, I sold ninety-five acres and then whatever.
So, this isn't part of what's left over?
No, no, I simply, my home, no, this isn't, this is land that they, was left over from their subdivision, but it's been six or seven years, so it passes that five-year window of land to be re...
I'm curious why this comes out on the Handsome School Road. Where does this come out on the Handsome School Road?
It has frontage all along the Handsome School Road, from where Skip Road comes off, it goes over the farm...
So, it's from Skip Road down?
All the way back to the solar farm. It comes back to where the solar farm begins.
It was given out a couple of years ago.
Originally, it was, yeah, it was my wife's family's land, but that was left over.
So, I'm still...
And I was going by the direction of Craig. I thought that I had, all I'm doing is I'm dividing it up so people can buy land and if they want to build or if they want a woodlot or whatever they want to do, it's up to them.
So, you are creating a subdivision then?
Yeah.
Yes. He's got a big chunk of land split into lots.
Right. I thought he...
He's not putting houses on, he's going to sell them as a lot, and whoever buys them will be putting the house...
Well, we've still got to have roads. It's still a subdivision. You've got to have roads shown.
For a tree, for a tree lot, you have to have road?
Well, I mean, for a subdivision. I don't know whether it's going to end up being a tree lot or a subdivision, it just...
Well, he's got land on Handsome School Road, so he doesn't need a road.
Yeah, he's got frontage.
He's got frontage. But I don't understand why this isn't a subdivision. He's subdivided...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say. If this is, in fact, a three-lot subdivision, we need to have it come in with a surveyor and stamped and septic systems and, you know, I mean, I don't know whether he's going to sell it for a woodlot. He doesn't know whether he's going to sell it for a woodlot. I don't know if he's going to sell it for a duplex or, well, not a duplex, but a single-family home or whatever. And we can't just, I don't think, I'm not willing to just, I mean, this isn't a subdivision plan. Am I wrong? I mean, I'm willing to say I'm wrong.
These three, these three are one lot?
Right now, they're one lot.
So, this is a complete lot that was left over and you've divided it into three?
Right, as Craig said, I broke one lot off already, and I'm adding seventeen acres to my existing, where I live right now, on a budding lot. So, and this is what remains of that. It's thirty-three acres, and I'm wanting to divide that into three.
So, these are basically three passes of land?
Actually, you already have one parcel for sale, right?
Right, that's the one I broke off. That's the one that I broke off, right?
But you've divided them into house lots, because the minimum house lot is three acres, and he's got three three-acre lots here. Tell me why...
Well, these are more than three acres.
They're ten acre lots.
Wait a minute, am I reading it?
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I see that, yeah, okay.
Then you got another piece, seventeen point six left over. That's the budding one that I'm adding to my home, to my property. I have no intention of building anything out there, I'm just dividing it.
Well, I'm not, but then why are you dividing it if you have no intention of building? I mean, I'm, truly, I am a little bit confused here. Am I the only one?
But Joyce...
Oh, no, I mean, he divided, no, he's got lots he can sell.
See, if somebody came in and bought the center lot...
Yeah, yeah.
Wait just a minute, we have too many conversations. Pete's making a point. Yes, Pete?
He's saying that he has three lots.
Correct.
See, I want to come up and I'll buy the center lot.
Yeah.
So, that breaks everything up.
Yeah, somebody got... Then why is, then why is he coming in with this if he just wants to sell...
That's what I say.
The center lot?
Why is he here?
He'll have to wait every five years to... Yeah, you have to...
That's what I, you have to wait every five years to sell them off?
But that's not what he's doing with this thing.
I know.
Unless you go through a subdivision.
Right.
Yeah.
Which isn't a big deal.
But you go to the full-blown subdivision, he splits it into three lots, and now he can paddle the three lots any way he wants, you know, one at a time, or all at once, doesn't matter.
This would have been nice to see it a little bit bigger, so you know where this land is.
Well, no, if, no, no, if it's a subdivision, it would have been nice to have the whole plan on the twenty-four by thirty-six or whatever size. So, you know where the septic systems could possibly go, where the houses could possibly go, where the setbacks are, the side setbacks, et cetera. I mean, this is just...
Well, he's going to sell the lots off. I don't know if you'd need all that.
Yeah.
I think he's just trying to break it into three lots, so you can sell them individually, is what he's trying to do.
Are you going to keep track of every five years?
If it gets approved through the subdivision, he can sell them all tomorrow.
That's right, but what I'm saying...
I don't understand what five years has to do with it.
But what I'm saying, this is not an acceptable three-lot subdivision plan. Have you ever seen a subdivision plan come in like this? No. If they have roads, they have roads. If they have...
There's no roads, it's on road.
I understand that, but they don't have, this doesn't tell me anything. It doesn't tell me...
It doesn't tell us where the land is, and I think that's important. I mean, I know where it is.
The dimensions of every boundary is on there, and the frontage is on there, and the frontage and the river, which is just...
That's not going to tell us anymore than what we're going to do.
No, it's a lot of wetland.
That, we don't even, is the wetland shown on here?
No, there's a lot of wetlands on it.
I mean, this tells us nothing, Craig. This is, tells, to me, I won't vote for this. If this is a subdivision, I want to know where, if, I don't care if he sells it for a woodlot or not, but he could sell it for a house. I want to know where the house will be. I want to know what the setbacks are. I want to know where, if he would put his, just like any regular subdivision.
Yeah, but he's going to sell the lots off.
Look, Darrell...
Well, when the purchaser of the lot buys that lot, that's what they're going to have to supply.
If he was selling all thirty acres at once, they would be responsible for doing that, whoever...
Well, then why is he in here with this then? Why is he in here at all?
The only thing I don't like about it is it doesn't, it doesn't tell, I had to go look to find out where it was, and I had to go on satellite to find out, I think you should have it attached to something, I mean, to show where this actually is.
I'm not sure I agree with you, Joyce, and here's why.
Well, that's okay, tell me.
If, help me out here, where you got the X, the three lots that you got there, that is currently one lot, right? That's correct. Okay, and this is the proposed how you want to split that up? Split that one lot up, yes. I really don't see a problem, I mean, I'd like a better drawing, but like breaking that into three lots...
Yeah, he's got this one for sale.
No, I buy one of those lots, now it's my responsibility to figure out where I'm going to put the house, whether the land perks and all, I mean, I'm going to do that before I give them any money to buy the lot.
Then how come we, in the past, when we have had a subdivision come before us, we've put all these requirements on it?
Because he's going to build on it.
Well, he's prob, he could very well build here. I don't know. I don't know what he's going to do.
I don't understand, I'm not, I'm not submitting to be building on there, that's not what I'm asking at all.
You're just selling them off a building, Pete.
I'm just selling acreage.
Well, I just, it doesn't make any sense to me at all.
We just put that condition in there, so they're just to be sold as building lots.
That's fine.
Yeah, yes. Well, not at this time, but if you could just wait a little bit, please, I'd appreciate it. We need to get this resolved. Darrell, explain to me why I'm off-base.
Because he's going to sell them off as lots, whoever buys the lot, sell them off as individual lots, whoever buys them would be responsible for what you're talking about. They would do it, nobody would buy that lot without doing all this before. It would be pending that they can do all that.
Which is a subdivision.
Which is subdivision. He's got the frontage of these. Which is subdivision. He's got the frontage of these. He's got a lot of wetland in here, but-
I don't see the wetlands. Maybe I'm blind, but-
But he's not-
There's no indication?
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Well, he's not doing a, uh, no, I can't think of the other, a cluster, so the, so the wetland doesn't count. If he was doing a cluster bit, subdivision it would, but... And he's got the lots or, you must've known something about spaghetti lots, huh, because you've made them big enough so they're not spaghetti lots.
Right, yeah. There's a formula for that.
Yeah, right here, subdivision. This is in our ordinance. A division of land is defined in Title 30A, Section 4401 of the main revised statute enunciated. Without limiting or expanding the foregoing, a subdivision is, in general terms, the division of a lot of land into three or more lots within a single five-year period. See the Town of Leamington subdivision rules and regulations. I mean, you can't tell me this isn't a subdivision. I mean, I'm-
Nobody, nobody's arguing this, not subdivision. I don't think that's the argument. I think it's a subdivision.
But, and, and, and so if some guy comes in with five lots, wants a subdivision, he can come in with this?
No, no, I, I-
Well, then why, why can't he come in with it?
Well, actually, after watch September twenty-fourth, you can do a five-lot subdivision.
Well, that's not September twenty-fourth yet, and also, I'm not even a hundred percent of that because, I mean, we can stand here and argue between us. You guys can vote the way you want, but- Huh?
We're not arguing, we're having a discussion.
Yeah, okay, well, we can, we can, we can offer different points of view, which I am more than willing to do. I am just not going to vote for this because it's a subdivision and it is not the normal procedure. They usually come in with a sketch plan, and then we go into the final plan. I just don't see-
Well, this is a sketch plan.
Well, then, so then we, you wanna accept the sketch plan and then he comes back within thirty days, I think it is, or whatever, no, there's a certain timeframe, he comes back with a final drawing of a, of an engineered subdivision plan?
So, this doesn't, this, this doesn't abut the solar farm. This abuts a piece of land between-
It does abut, it does abut the solar farm.
Okay. Right. That would've been nice if he'd have put that in there so you'd know where this is, but-
Solar farm's on the right or left?
Well, that's it, that's what I'm saying. There's nothing on here.
That's the right bottom corner.
I could've drawn that, almost.
This almost looks like it's taking it out of the plot plan, doesn't it?
Yeah, yours is a little different, mine, yeah.
Now, Greg, if I bought the center lot, I, I put my house in-
You can't buy the center lot without splitting that up. There's no center lot. That's all one big piece, and he's dividing it into four pieces of one he's retaining for himself. This is the subdivision idea, whether it's just a sketch plan or not.
If it's a sketch plan, I'm, I'm okay with it, as long as he understands that he's coming back with a-
Well, he has to do a subdivision in order to-
In order to split it into three lots.
Split it, unless he did it every five years.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's not, not what he's trying to do, he's trying to-
My personal opinion is, as a sketch plan, it flies. We can accept it as it is-
I agree with you there.
And then send it back and say, hey, look, we wanna see-
Send it back. We tell him to go to the-
Shows where the pins are, all that stuff with all the dimensions, and then, I think, you know, I-
Yeah, just what Craig, you let me know whatever they want.
He has six months to come in with a final plan. He cannot sell or do anything-
Right.
Until he comes back with the final drawing, which is much more extensive than this. I'm okay with accepting this as a sketch plan for a subdivision. I just was confused. It seemed to me someone, some people were saying, no, it's not a subdivision and I'm saying, yanging on about it against this subdivision, you know?
But, yeah, no, I think if it's a sketch plan, it flies. As a, as a final plan, not yet.
Are you comfortable with what we're saying?
I'm very confused, but Craig'll, Craig'll stream me out.
So, what, the way I see it right now, and once again, they will correct me if I'm wrong, is that we can vote tonight to accept this as a sketch plan for a minor subdivision. And then you have six months to come back in with a final plan that will show us a lot more information, clearly delineating it will be a stamped engineered plan, delineating where the wetlands are, where, you know, I guess there are no roads.
Whatever Craig tells me, whatever Craig tells me, I'll take care of and do.
Okay.
Well, that's what they're telling me right now, and that's what I'll be telling you, so.
Okay, all right.
But I can't engineer, I can't engineer roads 'cause I've got no idea-
Well, you, you, you are not gonna have roads in here, 'cause you have, you have the frontage.
Right.
But you can go to the ordinance, it's on page-
Yeah, wetland survey's been done, so I mean, providing you with that's not a big deal.
And, and Craig will, or you can speak with Craig and he can tell you. Now, uh, what, after we vote on this tonight, the next step would be for you to let Craig know when you wanna come back in with the final subdivision plan.
As soon as I can. He tells me what he needs.
We meet the first and third Mondays of the month, and know, know that it will mean an engineer, it won't be a little piece of paper like this, and it will have an engineer's stamp on it.
Let me know exactly what I need, I'll take care of it.
Okay. Yeah.
And I'll have a new, I'll have a new need, a new need.
You mean-
Uh, wait, wait, what, yes, hold, hold on, Mr. Taylor, hold on, what? Oh, yes, ma'am. If you could get up and tell us your name, please?
Yeah, yes, Christine Joyce, I'm across the street from-
Okay, can you go to Mike?
Christine Joy, Joyce, N Y C E. I'm at one ninety-seven Hanscom School Road, so I'm across the street from David's driveway, and I was walking my dogs and I saw there was a sign for, land for sale, down at the end of his driveway, which looked like it was to, would be to the left of your home. Okay. And I talked to the realtor and I asked her, 'cause she has the other piece of land for sale, which is sixty acres, right now?
The sixty is, I bought it at sixty acres.
But she's got, there's a sign on that piece where just, a gravel road was just put in on Skip Road, there's a sign there. And the real estate person told me you have a ten-acre lot for sale down near your property, and there are going to be three other ten-acre lots.
That sign is only a ten-acre lot.
Okay, what-
The only one that's for sale.
Okay, what I, you, what I am confused about on this frontage is that, that, most of that land goes right down into a stream, ponds, and it's filled with, uh, wetlands in there. And what was for sale originally, before he bought it back, uh, it was gonna be sold for recreation only. So, apparently, at that time, there was a belief that this land was not gonna be usable. Now-
Well, that's why, that's why, Christine, on the, on the plan that would be coming in, I expect to see where a house would be built if he sells it.
Right.
Just so that we know that when the person does buy it, they have to put the house within that designated area.
Well, I don't know, acreage, you know, when I'm walking out in the woods, 'cause I go out that way a lot with my animals, but what I'm don't, and I'm, I'm just questioning, 'cause I really don't know. You have frontage on Hanscom School Road, uh, from Skip Road down to wherever this, okay, solar farm is, and you go back all the way close to the river?
On the river.
On the river, okay. So, seem like, okay, that's what I, I could not understand with-
Thirteen hundred feet, they're very deep.
Okay, thank you. That's what I really want to know.
And then you get the beavers in the deal too.
Beavers? Well, we wanted to save the beavers, of course, but anyway, okay, that's really what I wanted to know, because, um, there's a big change from what was earlier with the solar farm, and I wanted to kind of know.
We will hold, once he submits his next plan, we will hold a public hearing, and you would get a notice 'cause you're under butter. So, you're more than welcome to come back at that time, ask whatever questions or express whatever concerns or whatever.
Thank you.
All right, Christine, thank you for coming. All right, is there a motion to accept Mr. Taylor's sketch plan, um, for a three-lot subdivision with frontage on Hanscom School Road?
I'll make a motion, we accept it as part plan.
Seth seconded, Bob seconded. All in favor? Okay, all right, we're all set. We'll see you whenever you let Craig know, whenever, you've got six months, so.
Six months.
Am I like a rat carrier?
What's that?
I said, am I like a rat carrier?
Yeah, all right, that's not a bad thing.
All right, we still have one more thing to go, and we're running late, and I apologize for that. This is the application of Sandra Sutala, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Trillium, Trillium Engineering.
Well, the gentleman, this is on Althea Lane, and the proposal is to, um... I assume you're Mr. Doobie from Trillium? Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna have you, if you would. Why don't you, um, if you could put the thing closer to the podium, maybe, in case you have to point things out, 'cause we can't hear people if they don't stand at the podium and, okay? I got lost and couldn't find it last time. Yeah, I know, yeah.
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 Okay. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for your patience in waiting so long.
Ah, no problem. Glad, glad to be here. So, I'm Eric Doobie with Trillium Engineering, and I'm a professional engineer, um, work on these site projects, shoreland projects, subdivision projects, like you were just talking about, so... So, basically, the project in front of you, um, has an existing cottage on it. I think we shared the existing site plan and the removals plan, which was in red. If I talk too fast, don't be afraid to slow me down.
I just wanna get both plans out here so I can look at them at the-
What we'd like to provide typically is, um, is an existing site plan, so that people understand the existing conditions, and then like to provide a proposed site plan, in this case, it's C one oh one.
Sorry. Okay, I think I've together here.
So, what's in there is what you're tearing down?
Essentially, we'd like to do some sort of demolition slash removals plan. So, the existing cottage will be torn down. We have, um, we have that existing conditions plan that's performed by the survey company, um, for that lot, which gives us our existing setbacks, gives us, in this case, we had to go out and verify the existing height and volume for this, um, cottage. And then, um, and then kind of gives us the existing, the garage to remain, driveway, and so on, and then utilities. So, the C one oh one shows our proposed cottage, with the, essentially, we're sticking with the setback that we have now, no closer, no further. The reason we're doing that is because we have the existing garage and we have a tight space in behind. The owner, we talked about originally pu, pushing it back, uh, a few feet. We talked to Craig about this, just, or I talked to Craig about this briefly on that, and then we had some conversations with the architect, with the owner, um, about that, and decided that because of just how tight it is and not being able to hit things between the garage and the house, that's where we ended up, where we ended up. Existing structure is a twenty-three feet high, and, um, so we know we're limited to that versus if we moved it back to the seventy-five, we could go up to a twenty-five-foot-high structure. So, those are the choices that we've made at this time, um, for this project, so...
You moved it back, you're already back further than seventy-five though, right?
No, it's, I believe, the existing is sixty-six, and that's where maintaining, of course, that's to the deck.
Oh, wait, I'm looking at it from the wrong-
So-
Off to the right.
Let's just, let's just, yeah, if we look at this plan, so the water or the lake high-water mark essentially is page-right. The garage is actually on the roadside, and then the building is essentially in the middle of the lot.
So, basic-
Where is the septic system?
Septic system is gonna be drivable, which is adjacent to the garage. So, that's shown on the C one oh one, which is page north of the existing garage.
Yep. Any other questions?
The well, um, just off the lot line.
Is that W the well?
To the camp itself?
I'm sorry.
You won't be driving to the camp? Would you have room enough to drive by all that?
So, if we look up here, so we have the existing roadway, that's page-left, we have the existing driveway that's going to be maintained with the, uh, proposed septic field, and then we're not, um, doing anything to the driveway behind the, uh, the new structure. New structure will basically go where the existing structure is, so we're gonna maintain that driveway, maintain that access to the existing road.
So, if you could just explain the, from what I can see, the, um... Basically, you're using all the, the space on, on this plan that you're showing, but you're just reconfiguring what it is, like it's going from one solid deck to a, a proposed porch and a deck, is that true? But it's all within the frame, frame-
That is correct.
Okay. And the well is, is that where the W is on the, where's the well located? I see, I see a little W by, uh-
The well is the existing well that's on this side of the property-
Okay.
Which is against that border.
Okay.
So, the other question that was there was, so we're, we're expanding it to the allowances of what the zoning ordinance will allow, to answer your question, which is why we did very specific volume and square footage calculations.
Any other questions, anybody? Why don't, do you wanna set up a sidewalk?
So, you've already, you have a solid tested design for this?
When you say for this, what's this?
The septic system.
Yes.
You have a design for that already?
Yes.
'Cause it says approximate location.
Yes.
I'm not sure, how do you do that, approximate, I mean?
Approximate means I'm not the one putting it in, so I say approximate the fact that it should be within a foot, but I also know some contractors that, um-
Depends on who's specing it, whether you can move it around.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I haven't figured out anybody to get those things in perfectly yet. When I do, I'll, I'll take the word approximate off.
That's a good answer, I'll take that.
So, uh, would someone you, uh, be available for a sidewalk? Is there any particular time that's bad for you?
That's kind of a loaded question. Um, like, when you say any time, what does that mean? Does that mean morning, afternoons, does that mean middle of the day?
Usually we do them in the afternoon on a, yeah, it can be on a Saturday, but, you know, it's obviously still light out until six-thirty. I think people prefer more to do it on a weekday, uh, before it gets dark and, and, uh... But, I mean, it could be done if Saturday's the only day you're available. We can try to work around that.
No, I can make it work. It sounds like the process is that you have to accept the application and then we're going to do a follow-up meeting, is that, is that correct?
What happens is this, we, we accept the application tonight, we set up the sidewalk, and then two weeks from tonight, we'll hold a public hearing, and you would come back and explain that to the audience, if there is any.
Sure.
And then we vote on it. Ninety-nine percent of the time, we vote on it that night.
Yeah, so is it possible to do the sidewalk at the, at the public meeting, before the public meeting?
We, we do them before the public hearing, yes.
Yeah, so-
So, it would mean some-
He means that day.
Oh, you mean the same day?
Yeah. It saves me a trip, that's why I'm asking. I've just put, you're asking me, and I'm just putting it out there, saying that would be the best for me.
Yeah, that would be, uh-
October sixth.
October sixth, at two o'clock on October sixth, would that work for you?
That works closer to the meeting time, works better for me, but I'll do whatever.
We're all home eating dinner, so.
Yeah. I'm gonna end up just going down to my favorite place down the, uh-
It's two o'clock, you're gonna be home.
Do we have anything on the sixth agenda yet? Something in my head it says we do.
Isn't that the date of the next meeting?
Yeah, but do we have anything on the agenda of this plan?
At two-thirty, go, go, go.
I mean, I'd be willing to go as late as three, but-
Whatever, whatever works.
Was three o'clock, okay? Okay, okay.
No, we don't, not this time of year.
Three o'clock. Ten, six, three o'clock, sidewalk.
Three o'clock?
Yes. Is that what everybody said, three o'clock?
Yep.
All right, I, I just have gotta check something here to make sure that I'm not double-booking, if you will. Just give me a second. That's done.
Do you have a septic design?
Yeah, I thought it was in there, wasn't it?
I didn't see it, thanks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure we provide that, but yes, we do. We'll make sure we send it to you, Craig.
Okay, all righty, so, um... I, I told Todd, can, can we switch Todd and Nathan to seven o'clock?
Do whatever you want.
You know, could, but will somebody let them know? And then-
Switch the others to seven?
We had it seven fifteen, but I thought I had something else, but I don't see anything that's on the agenda for the- But I thought I had something else, but I don't see anything that's on the agenda for the 6th at this time, is that...
The Amish, they could be back at 06.
Well, that's what I'm saying, come at 7:00. I had said 7:15. So if you could, if you could just be here at 7:15, we have some people that's kind of iffy, if you heard them coming in. So if, if then, if they don't have their plan ready, we'd hear you at 7:00. And if they do have their plan ready, it would be 7:15. Is that all right with you?
Sure. Whatever, whatever works for you.
Okay, so...
Do you have a business card?
Yes.
Could I have one before you leave?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You'll have him at 7:15.
Yeah, I'm putting him at 7:15, but it could be, he's gonna be here at 7:00.
Parking's gonna be tight out there. You probably know that anyway.
I'll ride with somebody, 'cause I always get lost down there, so...
How far do you have to travel?
Me? Well, I'm in Wyndham, but my office is in Yarmouth.
Wyndham, you can go home for supper, I do. Your wife is straight up, huh?
No.
'Cause I'd go home and eat.
No, she's, she's...
Do you have, do you have any questions for us?
No, I think it's, I think it's pretty, pretty clean on this particular project. So, that being said, there's always questions.
And how do you pronounce Sandra's last name?
I think it's Sutlay.
Sutlay?
Sutlay.
Sutlay, okay. Is there a motion to accept the application for Sandra Sutlay on Althea Road to... Is there, Grace seconded it? Bob made the motion, Grace seconded. All in favor? Okay, we're all set. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
On October 6th, whatever it is. Thank you. Be patient. Okay. Let's do the minutes and then we can... Oh, I, I do want to bring up a couple of things.
Thank you so much.
Donna has moved back into her old office. Thank you. And Craig has a new assistant, Tina. She's been sitting out here very patiently. And now she's in her, well, originally it was supposed to be her office anyway. And, so that was accomplished today.
Thank you.
Then the other thing is that the... October 5th event at the airport seems to be going along. And questions have been answered by the, for the select board. And, you know, there's obviously some abuddas that have some concerns. But I think Mr. Stockwater has done an admirable job of addressing those concerns. And he will close the airport down for, I don't know, 24 or 36 hours. So there will be no use of the air, of possibility of anyone... He's, he's removed the parking off the runway and put it on the side. He's got security, he's got police, he's got all his licenses.
Food trucks?
Food trucks, everything's licensed. He's, he's hired a professional promoter, Pilot Cove. And they, they do this all the time. They do it at Thompson's Point, wherever. So it just looks like unless something untoward happens, that event will be taking place from 1 to 9 on Sunday, October 5th.
What was the people, this idle front?
I don't know, that's the extenuating circumstance. I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do. I don't think anybody does at this point. I mean, the town is not officially involved in, in that. It's a private business. And so the guy is, he's obviously... And one thing he understands is that he, he would like to do four events, I believe it is, next year. So he knows that he has to come before us. And I've suggested that perhaps he might wanna come in January or, or February to get everything done before the season.
Well, that'd be fun for him, coming before us, with the 34 houses over there that'll be here.
Well, that's the way the cookie crumbles. The thing that I have to, the, the thing that I, I think we can do is instead of having him, him come back every time for each event, you know, if he comes in with an overview of what the events will, will be, whether they're gonna be musical or old-fashioned cars or whatever he's gonna do, we can do a one-year permit for all four events. And we just, I mean, the parking will probably be the same, the number of outhouses, the, all that kind of technicals.
I wouldn't mind seeing the Beatles again.
Huh? Beatles?
The Beatles, did you say?
If you would, yeah, please.
Just to elaborate on that, I did speak with our attorney firm. I have paperwork that Paige has forwarded to me, I will get it out to you if I haven't already, with a number of possible ordinance layouts for the town to go in front of the town to approve for these large events. So they've already started working. I think there's four or five different layouts for you to look at and change around. It's from surrounding towns, Scarborough, you know, large events from 500 people up to 5,000.
Okay. The, 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 you use the word that always puts a hitch in things, and that word is ordinance. If these are proposed suggestions for things we can put on the approval, like in the notice of decision, that's one thing. But if you are proposing an ordinance change, that means we have to put up a referendum question before the town for the March Town Meeting to vote on whether or not they even want these things in town.
Right. Well, these, this is something that we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come face-to-face with because going forward, we absolutely don't have any type of... Circumstances for this, so...
I understand.
Before this gets out of control, we either gotta make, or come up with something or figure out which way in the attorney firm is ready to work with us, to guide us, so... I just wanted to give you that update.
But wait a minute. What do you think of, yes, I hear what you're saying, and, and we do have to have something in the ordinance. What would you think of, of having a public meeting? Just a discourse-type of meeting for this type of thing? Like, it could be either at one of your nights and we'd be there, one of our nights and you could come or something? Just sort of as, sometimes if people don't fully understand things, it might affect how they vote?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Or just a public...
Sort of a town education kind of thing.
Public input.
Yeah.
On really what the people, the town may want.
Because that could affect on, that, that could affect the type of ordinance that we...
No, absolutely. You know, getting a group together to talk and hear what we may not even think of some things that they're, they're questioning, so...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, because, I mean, coming up with doles and, and functions there as well, we're gonna be in the same situation, so...
We've already approved doles, though.
Yeah.
You could call Barney.
Luckily, he doesn't speak into his mic. So, how about if we do that, like, early November? Because then we're getting into the holidays. And if we're gonna do an ordinance, Patty has to have the, the wording by, I don't know, January 19th or some...
Over the same time before the book, for the budget.
So if we did that, maybe, do you wanna do it at one of your meetings or...
Yeah, we can, we can set it up. I'll check with Matt and see what would be the best time. And we can put it out, get it advertised in the paper and get it out a few...
And just make it, in my opinion, my thoughts, just to, you know, it's a general information. We want public input on, does the town want something, so how big does it want it to be?
Right.
That kind of thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, we know that we're going to get a certain cluster of people that are going to probably be opposed no matter what. And so that will have to be taken into consideration when the final decision is made.
Yeah, 'cause if nothing's changed, we still have a very vague event, you know, permit. So if he didn't wanna have three and he wanted to come back for one, there's nothing that truly stops that right now. So...
So anyway, yeah, I like that, thank you.
No, absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
So you put out when we're gonna do it?
Yeah, I'll check with Matt and the board Thursday and see what was a good time and I'll get an email to you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. All righty, let's, I, I don't think I have anything else that...
I need to tell everybody, I had no DVD to go by to do these minutes.
That's okay.
It was very painful for me.
Did you take a leak?
So this is the best I could do. Joyce, you must have changes.
Well, you know, I have to admit that I don't think I read these. I can't remember when it's been since I haven't read these, but...
I think I sent it out.
Oh, you did, you did. I just, I just spent a little crazy at my house.
Grace, you got any feedback?
Well, let's take a few minutes so we can read them, please.
We're not gonna do the conditional use permit?
Oh, yes, that's right. We have to do JAMAs conditional use permit, yeah. Let's, let's just finish the minutes while we started it. Did they speak off-camera? Todd and Nathan?
What's that?
You have on page two, the first paragraph, Todd Goslin and Nathan Johnson had spoken off-camera with the board?
That's 'cause the cameras weren't working, but I don't think we need to include that. Oh, I don't need that.
No, no, 'cause it infers that we had a meeting that we shouldn't have had.
No. Okay. Off-camera, I'll take it out, yes.
Had, had met with the board at our last meeting. And in the second paragraph of the second sentence, I mean, the second line, it starts out, "The applicants have now purchased the property and have resolved how the wetland issues will be dealt with for the environmental protection." And shouldn't that say "and" the DEP?
Yes. Too many initials. Gee, I did pretty good on that paragraph.
What's this thing on the, "In addition, open sheds would surround the warehouse and metal shop on the..."
I, I don't know anything about directions. Maybe I can just say, "open shed surround the warehouse." There's only one. There's one open shed.
And then there's the greenhouses.
One open shed? Yep.
And greenhouses.
I think it's on the west side, actually.
I, I, I'm not gonna, let's just say...
And one open shed would surround the warehouse?
In addition, and greenhouses.
Yep.
In addition, and open shed, if it's only one. And...
In addition.
In addition, and open shed, and is it four greenhouses?
Yes.
And four greenhouses would surround the shop. You don't have to say shop and, you just...
Surround?
Surround the, would, no. In addition, and open shed and four greenhouses would be...
He said you'd look at them when you drove in the driveway.
That's, 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 that's... So they don't surround anything? Would be, yeah, would be located towards the rear of the property.
Yes.
I noticed what they submitted tonight had parking on it.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else have any other changes? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes of October 18th as amended?
My motion, we accept the minutes as amended, August 18th.
Is there a second?
Pete?
Pete seconded, all in favor. All right, now we have the JAMA notice of decision. To me, that would be pretty simple. Oh, first we need to vote. We haven't voted, can't vote. You didn't vote on JAMAs? No, we didn't have to vote.
We could've just voted on it and then...
That's right, you made the motion, you made the motion. Okay. So as far as the notice of decision, what conditions do you want in it? I will obviously state that the usual... Oh, you know what I forgot to ask? Craig, is, how much did, how much did Mr. Taylor pay, you know?
I did not see that check.
All right. We're gonna ask Craig.
Craig has it.
'Cause my guess is he didn't pay for a three-lot, what do you mean? All right, so notice it...
Talking about JAMAs?
No, no, I'm talking about Taylor. All right, we're still on JAMA. Obviously, I will, I will put in that, that there was an agreement reached with the abuddas on the lot lines. Otherwise, we just accepted the plan as, as presented.
Yeah, because she met all the requirements for shoreland zoning.
That was about as simple as it was.
It really was. Once she got the thing with her neighbors figured out, it was all easy.
Okay, that's pretty simple. Yeah. Okay, simple. Okay, the only other question I'm gonna ask Craig when he comes out is, what did Taylor pay for his application fee? If he only paid the $390, he's got to pay whatever the fee is for a three-lot subdivision. So I don't know, I'll have to ask Craig that.
Why, did Craig say that that wasn't a subdivision?
I, I, well, you know, our conversation, it's not that he didn't say it, it's just that I guess it was like he's just breaking off this lot and then it was like he's got three lots and then well, he's just breaking off its lot. And it left me sort of fuzzy-grained about what it really was. So, it's my issue.
It was a little fuzzy. No, it wasn't an issue. It was fuzzy.
But, but he, he hopefully did charge him what a three-lot subdivision will be.
Craig's still here, anyway.
I think he was in the office with Jason.
You could take 40 acres, you could take 100 acres or, let's make it easy, take 90 acres and break it into 30 acres. It would be a subdivision, but you don't, it's, it's a minor, it's, it's not a subdivision where you're gonna have to go have a soil test and all that. It's a, it's a buyer beware market. If he's gonna put houses on it, then that's a different story, but he's not.
Well, he does, I don't, I don't accept that. I, I don't know what he's gonna put on them.
I would, I would not.
Well, he's gotta come to the planning board, he gotta come to get a permit to put a house on it, so...
Well, I know, but he's gotta have them divided properly in a subdivision. He's gotta give it a name and he's gotta do it as a subdivision. I mean, that's what he's...
Well, I'm surprised he doesn't know the law changing.
Well, he's... Okay, so I'll ask Craig about that.
Well, he's got some problems on that road, anyway. There's no way he's gonna get some of those lots from, and some school roads, so, well, I don't wanna talk about this.
All righty. Any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Bob made a motion to adjourn, Grace seconded it, she beat you to it, Pete.